All right.
Camping.
Nice in summer. I know, it's lovely outside. I know, it's like, almost like Africa, you know? Almost. It is, yes. Nice. Yes. It is. I need that. I'm a melanated human, you wanna see?
Need that heat.
Well, it's the vitamin D.
Yeah.
Do you get vitamin D?
We ready to go?
Yeah.
Good. We are ready to go.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Good evening and welcome to the, oh, what is this month? July 11th meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. Would staff please conduct a roll call?
Brandon Haber.
Here.
Work.
Here.
Holder.
Here.
Harrington.
Here.
McReynolds.
Here.
Han.
Here.
Excellent. For each of the, for each public hearing, public comments will be accepted during the times indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members may call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period where they will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting live. They are not able to leave a recorded voice message. Is there, are there any announcements or changes to the origi, I know the answer is yes, but are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
No announcements, but one change to the agenda. Request number two has been withdrawn by the applicant, so the case before the board tonight will just discuss the variance related to the impervious cover.
Excellent, thank you. Next we'll move on to acceptance of last month's minutes. Were there any changes to the minutes? No? Any motion to approve the minutes? May I have one, please? Or else we don't approve them.
I move to accept.
Sounds like Tony's a second.
Yeah. I second that.
Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor, please, of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, the ayes have it. Voice vote to approve. All right. Now, on to the meeting at lar, or at hand. The procedure for tonight's meeting is, or the public hearing is as follows. For each request, the secretary will read the application of the public record. The applicant or representative will then have 10 minutes to provide their comments. I always say 10 minutes is not a whole lot of time, so if you can keep your remarks brief, that would be great. When you come up to the podium as the applicant or representative, make sure you sign in and provide your name and address at the podium. You might also want to repeat at a time or two so that whoever's doing the finding of fact tonight gets it down. Following that, the public is invited for comment. Probably not gonna have any, 'cause there's nobody, but at the podium, if you show up, you are to sign in, clearly state your name and address, and present your comments within the three-minute time limit. Also, keep your remarks brief. Three minutes is not a lot of time. Those in favor will be invited to speak first, those opposed second. Then we will turn to any call-in comments. After this, we will close the public hearing and the board will then conduct what, conduct what is called the finding of fact. This is where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact, or approve a finding of fact. So the first vote you hear will be not on the ruling on the request, but on accepting the finding of fact. Following this, the board discusses the request. During this period, the board reserves the right to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even after the public comment portion is closed. Once discussion is ended, the board will move on to a roll call vote of approving or denying the applicant's request. Please be aware that when we have a full six-member board, one, two, three, four, we have six, you only need four votes to be granted the non-use or use of variance. Does the secretary want to read the first and only app in? Thank you.
Yep. Okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by American Village Development LLC, ZBA number 24-04-12, 5135, and 5147 Portage Street. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 50-5.1, table 5.1-2, to allow 83% impervious cover for this redevelopment project, where 80% is the maximum allowed impervious cover for this C. I'm reading the wrong thing. Am I okay? Oh, sorry. Impervious cover for this CC district. I didn't want to read that second aspect of the situation, thank you. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties. There we go. Thank you.
Excellent. And I reminded myself not to interrupt you before you said that last part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant or the representative please come up, sign in, introduce yourself, provide your address, and then take it away?
Sure. Thank you. Sign in, yes. Okay? Good. My name is Kurt Artema. I work for a company called AVB. We are a partner in the LLC that is listed here on the application. I actually live in the City of Kalamazoo myself. I've been a resident for, boy, 16 years now in City Kalamazoo, so, and serve on, have served on a number of boards within the community as well, so appreciate the work everybody's doing here. I know there's a lot to keep the community going and appreciate the work that you guys do. So, we're here tonight with a project that has gone through a couple layers of city reviews already. The project is at 5135 Portage Road. This is a former Brewster's Restaurant location near the airport and I-94. This land was annexed into the City of Kalamazoo with the airport, is my understanding, even though it's south of Kilgore Road, it is inside of the City of Kalamazoo limits. And there was previously a gas station on the site as well, and I have an image that kind of shows, a historic image, that shows the gas station that was on the property as well. We are proposing a new four-story hotel. It's a Marriott branded Residence Inn. You may have seen in the news recently, the existing Residence Inn on Kilgore Road, just north of this site, is being proposed for conversion to affordable housing. That's a different group that's working on that, but it's, it's, this project is helping to facilitate that eventual shift of that facility to affordable housing by bringing a new hotel onto this site, which will service not only the airport and kind of the greater Kalamazoo region and I-94, but also some of our, our large employers in the area, Stryker, Pfizer, Zoetis, many of the kind of big employer bases that are within the county are in this area near the airport. So we're optimistic that this will be intended to help serve some of their needs as well. Pete, do I click here, do you think, on the screen? There's, yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'll click. So, a little bit of information about our team working on this. This is a partnership with AVB and Hinman. Both companies are based in Kalamazoo County. Ownership is based in Kalamazoo. There's an intentional desire to keep investments within this region, so the vast majority of the capital resources that happen from the two companies from a development standpoint are focused in on Kalamazoo County and the immediate perimeter around, around Kalamazoo. So, some recent projects we have completed include the 400 Rose, both the first building and the second building, that's kind of immediately south of City Hall here. Factory Coffee is in, is at the corner of Level &amp; Rose. That's kind of the front door of that 400 Rose project, and then Rose Street Nutrition is also in that building as well. Those two buildings have 236 apartments, they're brownfield buildings, that went through a process similar to this one. Also, a couple of other projects listed there, corner of Drake, which is Trader Joe's and Costco and Oshmo Township, an office, Mixed Foods Project in Portage, the Skyrise Project in downtown Kalamazoo, and then another Marriott branded hotel, the Spring Hill Suites in City of Portage, opened up last year and has been kind of consistently in their top tier of hotels from a performance standpoint. So, we're excited to get into another Marriott brand here. Area map, I think you know the context here, I described the area, but this is in technically the Millwood neighborhood, kind of the core of the Millwood neighborhood is a little bit to the north of here. The residential areas are north of I-94. One Well Brewing is just north, on the north end of this image, Millam Golf Course, the airport, Airborne Adventures, Salvation Army are kind of the, the commercial neighbors to us. We're also adjacent to the former Days Inn that had the fire a number of months ago. Couple photos of the existing condition of the site. You can see the former Brewster's Restaurant. This was actually a Bill Napps built-in, I think, the 1960s. So, yeah, I remember going to the, to the Bill Napps here years ago, and it converted to Brewster's maybe 20 years ago, 15 to 20 years ago. So, it's, it's been a part of the community for a long time, kind of built in a different era, different type of design. Building has asbestos in it, just kind of a product of it being from that era in the 60s. And the, it's kind of, it, in some ways, kind of reached the end of its functional life and needs a lot of cleanup to take place as well. Another photo of the corner, this, as, as you probably know, this area has had heavy, heavy construction for four years, and now there's another project in the City of Portage just south of the site that has really taken a toll on some of the restaurants and retailers in this area, just from an access standpoint, it's been really difficult to reach. So, here's that aerial I mentioned earlier. On the left side, at least on my screen, the left side is from 1997. This shows the gas station at the southwest corner of the site, and then the Brewster's Restaurant, which was Bill Napps during this photo, and then the existing site as it stands now with Brewster's, and then kind of the parking area that's taken over for the gas station. Yeah, go ahead. Question? Okay. Concept site plan, so a few couple notes, high points on the project. When we started discussing this with the city, we talked about it as kind of a gateway location, so it's that kind of that south gateway of the City of Kalamazoo, right at I-94 and the airport, adjacent to the new I-94 interchange at Portage Road that M.DOT spent years working on, adjacent to the, to the airport, near the major employer groups that I mentioned earlier. We've incorporated some what we think are urban design concepts, even though this is kind of a hybrid suburban urban site, it's heavily developed and it has been for decades, but it was kind of in a suburban format and scale, the way it's been developed. This is changing that a little bit and bringing in a little better utilization of the site by doing a little bit taller building as well. Some of our partners on this project so far, who we've been working with are, mentioned the city, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Eagle, so Michigan's Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Group, they are excited about maybe bringing a grant to this project through the City of Kalamazoo and their support as well. The airport, there are extensive approvals you have to get from the airport and the FAA to do any sort of construction near the airport, so we've gone through those steps as well. And then we started some conversations as well with, with the neighbors and with some representatives from the Millwood Neighborhood Association as well, started some of those conversations and hope to continue those into some deeper conversations as well. Here's a rendering of the project. This is kind of an early-stage concept rendering, where now we've submitted these initial designs for the next round of review with Marriott, so there's some tweaks that might happen to this, but hoping to do some brick materials and kind of a contemporary design for this site. There's some, there's some natural wood in there as well, and then some accent lighting kind of integrated around the site. Another angle of the project here as well. So I think that's the end of my slides. Happy to answer questions or whatever format you want to do. Trying to keep it brief inside of the, the 10-minute window and, but happy to discuss any other items.
Thank you. We'll put a pin in you for the moment, I suppose, unless anybody's really dying to ask him questions about something now. Pete, did staff want to make any comments? Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, thank you. Can I mention too, I've got maybe one minute left?
Yeah.
Just, just the, the nature of the request, two minutes left, sorry, the nature of the request. So, impervious coverage, the, the site obviously now is heavy, heavy impervious coverage already. I think it's at 78% roughly. We're requesting to go to 83%. The, we looked at staying under that 80%, using some different materials, some different ideas. It actually was advised to us, and we did some research with our environmental consultant, which is Fishback, that the deep contaminants that are in the site, we're gonna be cleaning up the first five, six feet at least of this to make it safe, but there's some deep contaminants from, from the former gas station that will still be down 30, 40 feet. And so, the comment was made, suggestion was made that the pervious coverage, so the grass areas, actually can, can contribute to those contaminants spilling farther and spreading farther around the area, especially those deep ones that we, we won't be getting down to. And so, the suggestion was made that we look at potentially reducing the amount of pervious coverage. So we tried to actually minimize, in this case, to get, soften the site, do some landscaping. We're gonna actually be cleaning out the areas where we're gonna do some planting, doing some deeper excavation there to clean out those soils and bringing new soils in. But the, I think I put in the application, the EPA actually had some, some recommendations back in 10 years ago or so on brownfield sites, on, on limiting the amount of pervious coverage to reduce that continued filtration of water through the site and the contaminants moving. So anyway, that's kind of how we arrived at this position of, the city didn't have an easy way through the site plan review process to say...
I'll finish my question.
But there wasn't an easy way to check the box of 80% coverage without having some sort of either variance or some sort of acceptance based on the unique condition of the site. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Staff comments?
Staff would just like to point out that, again, the request is for 3%. The focus is really that area where the gas station was, at the corner of the site. In the staff report, it was mentioned that, that corner will, you know, contain part of the footprint of the hotel, the concrete patio, a portion of the parking lot, so a lot of impervious surfaces, as the applicant mentioned, that won't allow for any infiltration of water into the ground. At the corner is a landscape buffer, so that is not a water detention feature at all, that is a, an elevated berm with plantings on it, and that, that corner at Airview and Portage that I'm referring to is where the additional soil excavation's going to occur, so they're gonna take more contaminated soil out, put more fresh in there. But that's, you know, that's really the, you know, the, the really, really the only green space remaining on what was the former gas station parcel. So I just wanted to point that out. Also, mid-June, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority granted an approval for this project as well, so the city is, is, is on board with seeing this redevelopment project move forward and, and, and the site redeveloped with a new hotel, hopefully. And that is all I've got for the staff comments. Staff is supportive of this request because of the, the soil contamination that exists. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So, now I will open this up for public comment. Anybody in the room want to speak in favor? Anybody in the room want to speak against? Pete is going to go check the call-in comments.
There's a slight change in the format here that I'm looking at. Bear with me a minute. There we go. Okay. The line is now open. And we have no call-ins related to this public hearing.
Excellent. Then that closes the public hearing portion. So now we can... I guess I did want some further discussion, just briefly on the request before we move on to the finding of fact, and it's actually a question for, for the applicant. So you may want to open his mic again, Shelby. This is more curiosity than anything. What is the overall square footage of the property itself?
It's 1.8 acres, so we can run the math, it's 43,560 an acre, so, of square feet.
I can run it. I have the call.
I said 43,560. Who's gonna get there first?
43,560 is a square feet in, in acre.
43,560 times 1.88? Is that 80, about 82,000 square feet?
Sounds about right.
So to, that's 82. This was more, I'm just curious, how big 3% of this is? It's 2,460 square feet. 2,460 divided by, say, 4, so it'd be a fairly substantial, like a 60-by-40-foot section of property.
I think it's a couple thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and like, well, 60 by 40 gets you to 2,400, so, you know, 50 by 60 is 3,000, so it's not a small, not a small bit of land. If it were like, I don't know, if it was like 25 square feet, obviously that'd be different. That's why I was asking, I was just curious, what is the size of the difference here? Anybody have any other questions for him?
Did the developers actually purchase the property?
We've had the property under contract for a number of months, probably 10, 11 months now, and we've been working through all of the entitlement process, and we have a, an approved, an agreement with, with Marriott that we've submitted, but the property is under contract and we intend to close in, I believe, August.
Okay.
So, assuming all, this was one of those steps in the process?
Yeah.
Is coming here, and then we'll have, we'll go back through site plan review, we've already submitted drawings for site plan review, and we'll adjust those based on conversations that occur at this meeting and other meetings over the next several weeks, but we intend to close and have it fully under contract.
Okay. And did we agree that there was about 1,000 square feet that is in question here? Is that?
I, I figure around 2,500, which kind of sounds to me like about the size of 12 to 16-ish parking spots. For a hotel that size, it's probably...
A hotel, a parking space is about 400 square feet for one space.
So that's like, okay, that's even, so it's like six spaces, and that's a pretty sizable hotel, so losing six spaces, six to, six to eight or whatever, yeah, it's a pretty, I figure.
Is that right, Pete?
Well, I mean, as far as the, the calculation, yeah, the calculation is just under 2,400 square feet, and if your average parking space is nine to 10 feet wide and 18 feet, so you're roughly, yeah, 10 by, 10 by 20.
Plus circulation.
Oh, I see, you're calculating, certainly, yeah.
That's how we... That's how we typically calculate.
So, yeah, so the parking spaces are 200 square feet, but then you need a maneuvering lane that's at least 20 feet deep to, to maneuver in and out of a 90-degree parking space. So that's what...
That's where it comes from.
That's what Mr. Artemo's calculating in when he says 400 square feet.
Okay.
That's the round number.
And I'm assuming the number of spaces allotted is dependent upon the actual size of the hotel, too, like, or the number of rooms sort of dictates the number of spaces. So if you start losing spaces, you got to lose rooms effectively.
Right. It's a tight linkage between the number of rooms links to the number of spaces, and there's also a zoning requirement in this particular zoning district for parking spaces as well.
And, and there's not the availability of any on-street parking to relieve those situations where you're, you know, you're at 100% occupancy.
Yeah.
Right.
I have a question about, did you guys already get your environmental assessment done?
Yes, so we have, yes, we are deep into environmental assessments, so we're, like I mentioned earlier, we're working with Fishback.
Yeah.
And so Fishback is our environmental consultant for the brownfield application, which has been approved by the city commission already. Our brownfield plan has been approved. And also the MD Eagle, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, that grant application involves extensive testing as well. And then we also have a, a Phase One and all the associated documents beyond the Phase One that's been completed by American Hydrogeology Group, which is based in Kalamazoo County, and they had done previous work on the site, which is why we engaged them as another party in that process.
Okay. Did you, so in that process, did they suggest that you guys clean up whatever existing contamination is there, or did they say that adding this impervious surface would mitigate whatever contamination is happening under the surface?
So the, the, the plan is that a cleanup will occur that will go down to a certain depth.
Okay.
So that's, in some areas goes down over 10 feet, in other areas it's more like five to six feet. So typically to be, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but typically to go, once you get below five to six feet and remove five to six feet of soils, then the ground for, for residential occupancy, whether it's a hotel or apartment, then it becomes a safe environment for that to be located on the surface. So, and again, I'm speaking outside of my expertise, but in our conversations with all of our consultants, the, the intention is that the site will have, one, asbestos will be removed from the building. The building will then be demolished, and then soils will be removed from the site down to a certain safe depth. And then the deeper contaminants will still be there, and that's what's causing the desire to have a less pervious surface, because those deep, deep soil contaminants would still be underground, and as water infiltrates through the pervious surface, it could continue to spread those contaminants beyond our site. There have been monitoring wells on, on the property that were put in in the 90s when the gas station was removed, and so that's where we have, we have extensive soil borings from the site as well. So that's kind of where we're getting our information and recommendations from. So we looked at like a pervious pavement material for those parking spaces that would be in question, and the recommendation from, actually, city staff at the time, was that pervious pavement on a contaminated site was not, was not encouraged because of this scenario of infiltration of the water, spreading the contaminants.
I, so just, I know that you're saying this is not in your wheelhouse necessarily, and I love Fishback, I think they're great. I have a question, though, about the containment of the, like, if you expand, can we put, this is just a question, if we, if I say yes to this, could we add a condition that they, like, contain the existing contaminants that are going to be, like, can you explain, go back really quick, can you explain that part again about how the depth of what you don't want to spread? Like, the more you dig, then what's going to happen? Can you go back to that point again?
Yeah, so it's actually not the more we can, so the, we didn't cause the contamination.
Right.
The contamination was, was decades ago. It happened decades. So we're trying to actually clean up the site from its current condition and remove the, the contaminants that, not at the surface, but also below the surface, down five, six feet and deeper in some areas, based on the experts on the environmental team. In terms of the spread beyond the site, we, so what's being recommended to us is that actually the more pavement, if we were to pave the whole site...
Yes.
And not have any pervious material, it actually would be better...
Yes.
For contamina, for the spread than if we had, didn't have any gra, if we had, you know, the more grass, the more plantings, the, the, the worse theoretically it is for. So that's why we're, we're roughly matching kind of what was there currently.
Yes.
And the area where we are doing some plantings is where we're doing removals of the soils.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. Can you pave over the areas that could spread? Could, could we say, yes, we'll grant this if we put the pervious, that would be the pervious surface, right?
The...
The one that would, like, contain what could be spread.
The impervious, actually.
The impervious is what, okay, I'm sorry, I knew that.
Yeah.
I knew that. Okay, the impervious is what we should put on what could be spread. Is that right, Pete? Is that accurate? Like, if we...
Yeah. Sorry. Turn my mic on. That is, I mean, that is correct. The, the impervious surface is what's not allowing water to...
Yes, to travel.
...filter into the ground.
Yep.
And is that, is that, does this design do that?
That's what I'm asking.
I mean, is the, is the staff, does the staff see that the design is, is meeting that requirement?
The design, the design does do that, and also because the city of Kalamazoo requires that, that stormwater be managed on-site, the applicant is still challenged with handling the water runoff and putting, it's got to go somewhere. So having a certain amount of green space not only softens the look of the property, it allows a little bit of infiltration of water directly into the ground, where the other 83% is being captured and being directed to the far side of the property to a underground chamber...
Right.
On the far, was that far east side?
Far east side is the chamber, yeah.
Yeah, so furthest away from where the contaminated area is, there's a, there's a, there's a chamber under the parking lot, and that's where all the stormwater that has to be contained. So, so a developer is, you know, is, you know, is, is not off the hook, per se, if there's more, more impervious cover.
Yes.
Because that water still has to be handled in, in some manner.
Mm-hmm. But...
Sorry. So, and I hope maybe I'm going to ask a similar question that you, so on the site map, it shows where the gas station used to be, because it's this spot with that big green area, right?
Yeah, I, I pull up this image here, I think.
Yeah. So it's on that front portion, so when I look at this view of the proposed hotel, there is some green space that would be...
That's where they're going to direct the water.
Like where this wa...
Yes.
No, I think the water's going, well, what I'm, what I want to know is, right where your cursor is, like, as it gets towards Airway Boulevard, that's all green in the proposed site plan.
Right.
So I'm assuming that's a non-contaminated area, then?
That's where the most extensive cleanup will occur.
Okay.
So that, so you can see that's where the gas station is now, so that's where the pumps and the tanks and all that kind of stuff was located.
Okay.
So the, the most extensive cleanup will occur in this area in terms of removals of soils. So that's one of the reasons why that landscape area, which will have been cleaned, is where we're proposing that green space.
And I think that the design of the hotel sort of forces you into more extensive cleanup than, because of the way the parking lot's...
To some extent.
Like, you've got to clean it because you need the green space here, because you can't put it in the middle of the parking lot.
Can't put it in the middle, and the migration, and again, I, I...
I mean, other than pushing the hotel, I suppose, all the way to Airway Boulevard and putting all the green on the other side of it.
Right. And, and the migration of the soils, if I can get the cursor back, or the migration of the contaminants is kind of in this direction.
Okay.
So northeasterly, so those deeper underground contaminants that we won't be getting at, because there's so, some of them 40-plus feet deep, the pervious coverage will be more, the impervious coverage will be more extensive in those areas where that's deeper contaminants remain. So where it was, it was rooted and where it's at the shallow spots is where we're going to be taking it out, and then that's where we'll put the new soil in and do the green space. So, and the challenge, what we're kind of battling is, the city zoning ordinance requires 20% pervious, and so we, the, the best environmental solution might be 100% impervious, but that would require a variance to go to 100%. So we're kind of trying to find that balance of, of cleanup the soils as best as we can in those most contaminated areas, still have some level of pervious green space, because I don't, I, I, I don't think, you know, we would prefer to have some greenery, you know, some trees, some, some, some bushes, some shrubs, some other things that are on the site versus nothing. Even though ironically, those things in this scenario are kind of the most challenging to put in place because of this unique situation with the contaminants.
Are y'all going to pull up those underground storage tanks that are under...
Yeah, those all come up.
They're all going to come.
Yeah, all the physical materials come out. So whatever's left in there, we'd be removing any of that infrastructure that's left. So, because all of those would be at a depth that's certainly, you can reach with excavating equipment.
So, I don't know. Well, I guess that's the question, so we'll discuss it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Gary, we probably interrupted you a long time ago.
Oh, that's, that's okay.
Sorry.
My, my question was answered.
Fantastic. Anybody else have any questions? No? Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
Then I suppose we can move on to the finding effect itself. Does somebody want to make a motion for that? Gary?
I move the finding effects for 5135 and 5147 Portage Street. Shall include information, shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated June 26, 2024, in the agenda packet staff provided for this request, as well as the presentation presented by the applicant here tonight. Fifteen notices of public hearing were sent out, zero notices were received. There was no one in the audience that spoke for or against the project. There were no call-in comments. Kurt Artemo spoke on behalf of the owners. He explained that they were going to build a four-story hotel there. The, the partners in the project are AVB and Hinman Group, both excellent developers in, in our area. He described the area in detail and really focused on the, the brownfield aspect of, of things. And I think this board had a lot of questions in regard to the brownfield, and Kurt answered everything. Fishback advised that, that the developers cap more of the site to prevent further runoff and further contamination. Pete explained that the brownfield granted approval for this site, and staff is, is in support. That's finding a fact.
Anybody second?
I second. I second the finding a fact.
Excellent discussion. I guess I'll just say what I'm going to say, because I always say it first for some reason. I don't really need to belabor it. I think the staff report sort of says everything I would want to say and, and why I would support it. Particularly that, in this case, impervious coverage is an actual advantage to the specific site, and that has to be done to deal with some conditions on the site that this applicant did not create but are inheriting and are trying to do something useful for it. And if 83% versus 80 is the way to go, then I'm in favor of that. Also, the lack of parking alternatives, and I think that's what I was getting at with the asking about, how many spaces would this be to get rid of? That's recognizing that I think, I think in this report, they might have asked neighboring properties if they could buy some pieces to sort of get there, and those are not, so they took other actions to try to do something to mitigate it before they came here and asked for the 83%. Excuse me. And I think those are all good reasons to support it, so I will vote in support of the motion, or the request. Anybody else?
I just agree with everything you just said, but I also wanted to add that my question, my line of questioning, like, I have mentors in my, in developing my perspectives and theories about the environment, master horticulturalists and growers and things, and I agree 100% like I said with what you said, and I'm thinking about just like the existing, when you have existing, it was shared with me that when you have existing things, at our, one of our sites, we've had like a lot of like urban fill in one of the properties, and I was thinking about excavating it all out. And one of my mentors said, well, if you remove it from this area, then it has to be, it goes to another place in the world. So I think that this is an excellent use. I mean, even though you guys are still going to do a cleanup with the underground storage tanks, I think this is a way to do this, and I think you've been getting good mentorship in this project, and so I will be in support of this project, and it sounds like you're doing your due diligence. Thank you.
I should say I jumped the gun. We were discussing the finding effect, and I jumped right to the approving the request portion. So if anybody needed any discussion on the finding effect, they don't have to be tied down by my saying I'll be in support. We can discuss that part after we do the finding of fact, vote if you prefer.
Were we not in discussion?
No, we're, we're on discussion. I just jumped to another discussion point.
Okay.
Which I'm going to hear about, I'm sure, from our parliamentarian, if I don't get it right at the end of the day.
Yeah, as long as you correct it.
Absolutely. So did we need, let me correct myself, did we need any discussion on the finding of fact itself?
No, you did a great job.
Thank you. Then I, we don't need a roll call for that. All those in favor of the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None opposed? The, the finding of fact is approved by voice vote. This is the point where I ask for a motion and second regarding the pending request. If there is one, please give me one.
I move to approve the variance request for 5135 and 5147 Portage Street.
Any second?
I second that motion.
There you go. Tony's got it. Now, having said what I said before, I don't have anything new to add. I don't imagine Remi has anything new to add. Did anybody else want any other discussion on the request?
We just have to ask Jesus to forgive us.
Excellent. Mr. Eldrich, would you like to take a roll call vote, since we appear to be done with discussion?
And we'll start at the other end of the dais tonight. Han?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Van den Homburg?
Yes.
Holer?
It'd be funny if I voted no now after saying I was going to vote yes, but yes. Thank you. That appears the request is approved by a 6-0 vote. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, our next agenda item is not on here, but I believe that we were going to get a brief refresher or some sort on Robert's rules from Charlie.
Again?
Well, not...
Lord!
Kind of part two.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Kind of a footnote, and it's going to be very...
Thank you. We do what we want. It's kind of true. We do.
I, I, I discuss things right out of work. Thank you very much.
Last month's presentation dealt just with Robert's rules. You may remember I mentioned that a border commission can alter the rules or, or set some of its own rules. And after the meeting, Pete circulated the rules of procedures of the ZBA, which you may have read. And I just wanted to draw your attention to, straightforward, two significant things. One is with reconsideration, and that under the... One is with reconsideration, and that, under the rules adopted by this board, is a little different than Robert's Rules, in that you have 10 days after the meeting to request a reconsideration. It still has to be somebody who voted on the winning side, shall we say, to, to bring that. So that's a, a little different. I think that allows a, a little time, and that, and is to head things off before the actual building permits are issued or what have you, and can just, with a variation.
So if we, just to give an example, so last month, we did the Panda Forest. And I can't remember, Panda Express, thank you. And I believe the vote wound up four to two.
I do what you're saying.
I believe the vote wound up four to two. So, and I was one of them who voted no. So if I wanted it reconsidered, I would have needed to have voted yes.
Yeah, that is correct.
Only the yeses can reconsider.
And you got 10 days for it.
So the four yeses can only be...
And that's with the time limit involved, too.
Unless the noes prevail.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
But you, you need to be on the winning side, so to speak.
Yeah, right.
I thought about that, too.
Which might be one of those where you may just want to not vote until the last, so you can maybe get reconsideration going ten, within the 10 days.
And then the, the other thing I wanted to point out is the, the last rule, I suggested to Pete, maybe we'd call this Joe's Rule.
Uh-oh.
Which is...
That gives the chair the, very clearly gives the chair the authority to simplify the rules of procedure as the chair sees appropriate.
Sort of like just running right over the, nobody called in or was in the room to comment, we can just move right by it.
That certainly works, yeah.
Thanks for telling us that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Extremely helpful.
That is helpful.
I don't, I don't know if it'll ever come up with the vote for, request to reconsider, but...
Yeah. And if there's ever a question, like, you leave a meeting and you're just like shaking your head as far as what happened, and if you were comfortable with how you voted, you can always reach out to me or reach out to Charlie, and...
Certainly.
We can set up a time to talk, you know, the day after the meeting. So you're, you're, you're never in this by yourself.
Yeah.
I think we all just want to be on the right side of history.
Yeah, right.
You know? For real.
I don't want to hear it, but it would be like, man, that expression, that should have never happened. Exactly. We're all trying to do the right, all of us. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. The demise of Kalamazoo is that Panda.
Panda Forest.
Panda Forest, or whatever it was.
Yep. Thank you.
Excellent. Good meeting. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
That's very good. I remember going to that, that Panda Forest. What is Panda Forest?
You? I don't know. 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 I don't know.